So 6:04, calling the meeting to order, joint meeting of the Select Board and Planning Commission, April 27, 2020. Here to talk about capital improvement and other projects, basically town planning, set some priorities for the year, delegate, and then maybe set check dates. Hit the ground running, look at the agenda here and see what we're going to talk. Carrie, you want to?
Yeah, I do have it. So the Planning Commission was on our agenda first just to give us an overview of the capital program that they've been working on, and then sidewalk plan. And then the Select Board was going to provide a brief update on the town hall relocation and where we're at with that. And then we're going to move into the collaborative part of the project over the meeting and discuss priorities for capital infrastructure projects. So I guess the Planning Commission's up first.
So for capital, I think that if we need to go down in details, maybe Ned could take us through that. But basically, what we have is a capital plan that, to the best of our knowledge, is balanced against the current projects. So if we have a project plan, we also have it paid for. And I think that the, we had a last minute meeting to see also how we would fare against an economic downturn that, you know, could eat into the LOT, which is the main source of funding for the capital improvement. But I think we gave two contingencies, one at 15 and one at 30%. Like I said, Ned can take us through it, but I think the take on was at about 30% is where we would sort of recommend, especially the Select Board takes very careful note about the projects that were kicking off. That seems to be where we have to start making some pretty tough choices about what gets funded and what doesn't. And short of that level of economic downturn, I think we're still in pretty good shape, at least in terms of the LOT funds. So maybe Ned, on to you. You're muted, Ned.
Yep, nope, just had to click the right button to come undone. The, yeah, the LOT is still, oh, excuse me, the grant, the capital plan still has the assumption that we'll have approximately 850,000 in LOT gross net revenue for the fiscal year. It also assumes that we will not have any fire expenses or public works equipment over the 10-year, over the, shoot, the five-year period. So its balances, even with some downturn in the LOT revenue, were still balanced. One key thing that the capital plan does include is under parks and recs, it includes 202,000 for the annual, would have been the annual bond payment for the pool that's been voted down, that would need to be taken out. But even with that extra 202,000, we are still very much in the green. Good job.
Ned, you have anything?
No, I think that's about right. The, like Ned was saying, the 202,000 at your discretion as to whether or not to leave that in the plan or not. The funding seems to be there. If, you know, the Select Board thinks maybe that'll go to a future vote once things sort of smooth out again, you can keep it in there. If it's something you want to plan for, take it out. If it's something you don't want to plan for. I think Al, maybe you weren't able to make the last meeting, but we read your email. And you had some very good suggestions. I didn't know if you wanted to reiterate those here. I was thinking mainly the, you know, shovel ready, that sort of thing.
Yeah, well, two ideas. First, use this time right now. So that, let me just back up one more premise, that once the epidemic starts slowing down nationally, I'm pretty sure the Congress will vote a lot of infrastructure funds. And so my feeling is that if we're ready, shovel ready, we will be able to ax those funds very quickly to save the town money for any project that we might have that meets those criteria. The second point is that I think we, as a town, we have an obligation, as now with the governor release, over making it a little bit more easy for us and industry, particularly contractors, to work, that we have an obligation to help our community start the economic turnaround. And so I'd like to see some projects get funded and help us employ some of our local people in building something.
And so Brendan, I just realized I probably should defer to you rather than calling on Al. But if you don't oppose, I'd like to invite anyone else from planning to operate recommendations or thoughts they might have on the capital plan.
Please, we'd love to hear from everyone.
I'll just, I'll just start out. I just want to start out just briefly in that today's call, I had a state call with Treasurer Beth Pierce, the President of the Banker Association, somebody else who is, I'm sure, really important that I'm sorry I'm forgetting. But they reiterated what Al just said in that towns should be prepared and start planning now to have their projects shovel ready. They anticipate what we, some of us in government remember as the ARA funds, American Recovery and Reinvestment Act, that they expect some similar funding type things to come forward soon. So this is a timing, it's good timing.
Yeah, recovery, the Fed rates at zero, they're going to bond at the tail. You're right, Al. So Jess, we're, let's talk about that. Let's see where you have with that master sidewalk. Where are we at with that? That's a ball that was in the Planning Commission. That was on the agenda, but I'm just curious if you guys have any light you want to shed on that.
What's your question again, Brendan?
Where are you at with the sidewalk master plan before we get to the CIP? I'd make a note on that, get some context.
So the latest recommendation, oh, Ned, do you want to, if you have it in front of you, you can go ahead.
I do, but why don't you go ahead and I'll?
Okay. If I recall correctly, and anyone can jump in and correct me if I'm wrong, I believe the latest recommendation on the sidewalk plan was really no change in terms of prioritization or, you know, building guidelines, that sort of thing. The big change was going back a few months now, you know, we ran into the wrinkle with the funding and whether we could take that from impact fees or not. I believe the issue was that to apply the impact fee, we would wind up, as it was written, applying it to individuals and property owners that were not necessarily doing development. And that seemed like not the intended use of that ordinance or plan. And rather, also, there was some confusion about how to apply it to roads that, you know, technically were existing in that there was maybe a dirt road there, but not necessarily improved to the point where, you know, we would necessarily get to them to a town road. And so rather than try to sort that all out in a detailed and, you know, complicated ordinance, I think the recommendation was to fold that all into the capital plan. I'm seeing some nods. So, okay. So that's where we're at with that, Brendan.
Okay, perfect. So nothing's changed as far as priorities go. We're just looking to get our funding into the CIP instead of impacts.
Correct.
Okay, so, any other updates on?
I just have a question. So we're no longer going to do any impact fees? Is that what I'm hearing?
Specific to sidewalks, I think, is what he's saying.
Yeah.
Oh, I don't, I didn't know we axed the whole thing.
Well, like I said, I think that's the recommendation coming out of planning right now. I don't think there's been a action.
I don't think the Select Board has reacted to that recommendation yet. So, yeah.
We got everything sidewalk related is in the Select Board's court.
Yeah, well, I think.
Your recommendation.
Just for clarification, I thought we had a sidewalk impact fee and then we rescinded it. And what we're saying today is we're not going to take another run at it.
Yeah, and in the, yeah, the thought that we should stick, like, just have it be funded through the LOT and the capital improvement plan with grants, not just 100% LOT.
I can't remember. Did we just, did we just suspend the collection of fees or did we suspend the whole ordinance?
You couldn't do a partial. That's what our attorney said. It was all or nothing. So it was rescinded or?
We needed an amendment taxing impact fees and we need to be approved the ordinance.
Well, we were through, we had to withdraw the ordinance completely. We would have to go through the whole ordinance process again and reestablish a, either reuse this existing one or propose a new one. But we're no longer.
I thought we just said that the recommendation is to keep everything the same except for the impact fee portion and to read off. Is that what the Planning Commission recommends? No? Or just leaving no ordinance?
No sidewalk ordinance.
No sidewalk impact fee ordinance.
So no sidewalk impact fee ordinance would certainly be an option considering the, it seems like the main actionable content of that ordinance was the collection of those impact fees. If there are other parts of that ordinance that you guys feel are valuable, there may have been something on maintenance or the design standard that we'd want to keep that would essentially just be governing the town at that point.
That could live in a sidewalk policy that could be a little bit more amenable?
I just would hate to see the whole thing scrapped. I mean, if there's a developer coming in to do a subdivision, I think we should be able to collect some impact fees for our own sidewalk development.
The problem with that, Jess, is that we had to, we have to assess it on all, like, if we were going to assess it on all new roads, even a small amount of new roads fronts, a minor subdivision would get that impact fee. And when you calculate it out, it ended up to be $25,000, $30,000 a house lot. So it ended up to be, you know, prohibitively expensive for even smaller developments, especially bigger developments would be, it would be easily, more easily dispersed.
But the amount could be reduced, or it could be just, you know, certain density development has the impact fee. I feel like, I was talking to NRPC about this when we were going through it, and they did have some alternative language that we could look at that wouldn't create such high amounts for people. I just hate to ditch the whole thing because I think it has merit.
Yeah, I agree with Jess. And I just think, Brendan, you and I talked at one point in saying, the language can be fixed so that it is not horrible for individual home developers.
It could be fixed. It's just now we get into the global picture of where we are as a town compared to other neighboring municipalities. And it's, I mean, I don't want to beat a dead horse when I'm going to say it once. We have impact fees at other communities that we compete but do not have. So to add this on as another impact fee, if every neighbor in town that touched us had an impact fee comparable to our regular impact fee, I would want to talk about a sidewalk impact fee a little bit more. I feel like we already have one, one pretty reliable source of income from developers that we collect that not all other neighboring towns have.
I just think when we talked about it with the Select Board, Brendan, that was your strong opinion, but everybody else on the board was very much for it.
Yeah, Grant?
Yeah, so, without, I guess, trying to get into the competitive aspect of the impact fees, I just, I don't want to lose sight of the fact that from the very beginning, the sidewalk plan was meant to be these arterial sidewalks. They weren't, it wasn't meant to capture sidewalks within developments. And that was where a part of the complication came from, is that you'd have someone putting in a development. I think what it's, we had like three examples back a few months ago, and I think one or maybe two of those were this type of example where someone was doing a subdivision. And we were trying to, or we were confused about whether or not we should charge them the impact fee for the road frontage that was within that development. And I think that's part of the problem, is that when this thing from the onset, it wasn't intended to put sidewalks in those places that was going to be up to the developer, and that was going to be up to them to decide if it helped them sell properties or not. What we wanted was connections between those developments, you know, to the other sort of points of interest within the town and the city. And that's what was intended to have been paid for by those impact fees, which would be substantially less than if someone were to try to put a sidewalk in their own development. So, you know, maybe, maybe it puts you at a slight competitive disadvantage in terms of locating a development in St. Albans versus Swanton or Georgia.
Now, Grant, what you're saying is totally agree with me. I mean, you're saying, take the main road frontage, where we need arterial networks, and charge them the impact fee on that, just that road frontage, make the inter, make the inside sidewalk within the project optional. I mean, at one point, I thought that that was.
That was one of, we had some complication with that though, too. There was like this double billing that was happening with, you know, they were changing a part of, they were dividing lot lines. And so they got the road frontage. And then when they put in a road, then they had to do more sidewalks. There was another impact fee on top of it.
So, could it just, sorry, could it just apply to main arterial roadways then? I mean, couldn't it be a language change? So at least we're hitting those main roads?
It did apply only to main arterials. What happened was, we had a minor lot line, somebody divided their property in half, and they had approximately 1,500 feet of frontage on a main road. 1,500 feet times, I think there were, there were the $35 per linear foot fee. That ended up to be a huge amount of money for just a two lot subdivision. So it was cost prohibitive. The other one that came along that was also on a main road was, they were just adding in a, a mother-in-law apartment, and theirs ended up to be almost $20,000 also. So it was, it ended up to being, the unintended consequences came out almost immediately when we went to apply it.
I mean, if, I will drop it if the Select Board wants me to drop it, but I just feel like it, there are other towns doing this. There's models out there where it's working. I mean, can't we try to rewrite it and do some, some, you know, analysis with those projects that got stuck in the middle and see what it would look like? I just hate to see the whole thing gone when I think it could be at least bringing in some revenue to help move the sidewalks along.
I think what we struggled with too, with this ordinance, was like fairness too, with the different types of, like, a developer, or whether it's commercial or residential, and then smaller subdivisions, and then how close they were to where, where the sidewalk master plan was lining up with the sidewalks. We felt, I think, one of the things that came up in our conversation in the Planning Commission is if this is something that the whole town's going to be using, then maybe there's, we should be using funding sources that the whole town and our visitors that are coming and using, you know, shopping here would contribute to, as opposed to putting it on just the developers or the folks that were dividing it. So I think that was part of our concern, too, was the balance of fees.
And?
So I just, I just think there's some good models out there. And I think Catherine Demetrick has some access to some, some ways that we could make this work if we want to. I want to.
In the, in the spirit of compromise, maybe, one option that we discussed, and I can give you a little bit about the whole part of the discussion, was a flat fee, right? And Ned, I think you probably remember, you may have even proposed it, a flat fee on a per parcel basis. So if you did a two unit subdivision and both had road frontage, you'd pay a fee for each of those. That's just $1,000 or $2,000, something. And I think we just maybe, I can't remember how we figured it out, but we thought maybe if you did it on like an average frontage basis, you could come to a reasonable number. And from there, I believe the discussion progressed to, well, for the amount of money that you'd collect and how much that would offset the cost of the town, maybe it made sense to just go back to the capital plan. So, you know, these are some things that were considered, Jess, and if you wanted to go further, those we certainly could.
I, after we had the problems with the fee, I checked two other towns quickly because I knew they had impact fees. Williston and Colchester have integrated sidewalk development fees into their overall transportation fee so that, and they seemingly have like a road reconstruction policy where they, when they rebuild a road, they add the sidewalks in, and it's part of their impact fee structure. So it's not a separate fee in any way. So we may want to consider something along those lines.
Let me go to Jonathan and then Stan. I want to take some pulses and how people feel about the impact fee portion. Stan?
Go ahead.
So how do you feel about this?
I believe we should have some impact fee related to sidewalks. We've come a long way with this ordinance. I just don't want to drop it. I think it'll work, but we have to not be so aggressive in charging those rates to the developers. Whatever will work, I would support.
Okay, Jonathan?
Oh, yeah, I think we should do something with it. I don't think we should just throw it all away. Whatever that may be, a flat fee, I don't know.
Like, like $1,000 a lot? But how do you, how do you differentiate it? Because we had $35 a foot in certain areas, $1750 in certain areas. So would that be a different fee depending on what area you were in?
Well, I guess we could look at that. But I remember when Pete West came in front of us and we're looking at his lot, how much he was going to have to pay. And he couldn't even put a sidewalk for what he was going to, not even half, you know what I mean? So basically, you're taking that money and you're putting it like, say, on the Route 7 North connector, you know? You're not really, I don't know. I think just a flat fee would probably work, but.
And?
Flat fee, not by the foot. So, I mean, another thing is you could do it on a per foot basis up to a cap, you know, that would be another option. And I think we even discussed maybe the possibility of overlays if you were concerned about where, who gets charged what on a linear basis. You know, so all these are options, and they're complicated options, but they're doable. That's where we want to go.
Ned, what were the two towns you said? Was it Williston and what was the other town?
Colchester.
Yeah, Williston and Colchester, yes.
That's interesting. If it was all in one, I'm just curious how they structured that. That could be interesting.
Yeah, I think integrating it into your, integrating it into a transportation policy when you rebuild a road or reconstruct a road, and including into your fee, your transportation fee structure, sidewalk construction. It just is simpler, easier, and, you know, integrates it into an existing fee structure.
Carrie, Ned, do you know how many lots the Planning Commission approves in an average year?
They don't approve the DRB.
That's an easy one.
Sorry.
I know, I'm like, trick question.
You caught me on up. I was working on permits all day for projects.
I don't, do you know? We're not going to guess. We don't have to feel, figure out the details of this policy. We just have to figure out.
I was wondering, I mean, if you're talking $1,000 a lot, do they create 30 lots a year? Would it be around 30 grand a year? Are we talking 10 grand a year?
But I mean, today is to figure out if we're going to move forward and who's going to do it, not to figure out the details of it, I think.
Well, definitely. It's just a question.
I don't have, I don't know.
So we think Planning Commission or Select Board needs to take this back.
Grant has a question or a statement.
Go ahead.
I would just say that if you do get down into the, you know, per lot, like if that's how the discussion goes, again, it's those lots that are on the roads that are the arterial roads, not necessarily just the total lots that they make per year or that they approve per year. It's some relatively small fraction of that, I think.
Yes, we're not talking. So are you trying to say we're not talking about that many lots if we go per lot? Is that the point?
Yeah, it would be, it would, it would almost be the lot that you start your subdivision, you know? So if you have a, you know, five acre parcel that you're going to do a subdivision, it's the road frontage on that five acres that's on the main road that you care about. What they do within the five acres, that's their business. And writing an ordinance to capture that was problematic.
Okay, so who wants to take this from here and start to work on something?
I think it's back to the Planning Commission at this point, is in my opinion, to do.
We've got a consensus amongst the Select Board members not to drop the fees to try to figure out something that makes sense. So maybe we ask the Planning Commission to figure that something out. Sound great to everyone?
Does sound like the consensus.
Okay, well, there anything other to do with the CIP that you might want to update anybody on, Grant? You hit a lot of points.
I think we covered it all. If there's questions, certainly, you know, we could.
May I add, I just want to add one more thing. It, the CIP does include, starting in 2022, a new town hall. It doesn't say where, but it does include the monies to pay for a new town hall.
So.
Along with, and some amount of land purchase.
Town hall relocation. Carrie, do you want to give a brief overview as where we've been with that?
I will. So we have this on the agenda because the Select Board, right after town meeting was, we were planning to have a meeting to discuss our exact next steps, and then the pandemic, and it took over our lives for a couple of months. So we did go forward with, and so during, on town meeting, I should back up, we had a question asking taxpayers if they would approve the soft cost expenditures just to get it ready, our question ready for town, I shouldn't say town meeting day, a public vote. And it passed quite resoundly. So we proceeded with hiring a project manager for the town, the town hall relocation project. Those bids went out and came back a few weeks ago, and the Select Board's going to review those next week, both for compliance and.
Hey, Carrie.
Yes. I'm hearing, so just one second. So that's.
Just one second. So that's.
Carrie, can you hear me? It's Sam.
I can.
I can.
You can. I have a question. Why are we jumping to this being a relocation when, you know, we also had in the discussion, there could be a renovation project done if we got proper renovation quotes from somebody who has experience of refishing old buildings to make them last?
So the whole purpose of having this.
The whole purpose of having this on. And we're getting some backfees from your computer. Could you mute? Could you mute? Thanks.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
I could just hear three of myself, and that was disturbing. Sorry. So the town hall relocation debate has been going on for a very long time. The reason we call it relocation is because we had a sub, we had a steering committee come forward, and then we paid a consultant to analyze three to five, I think it was, different options, and professionally estimate the cost for each of those options moving forward. All of the options to relocate were more attractive than rehabbing this building at that time. And I'll just back up a little bit by saying, a lot of municipalities work on long range and large projects by establishing a certain floor and then building on that floor each year that goes forward. And St. Albans Town unfortunately keeps going back to debating that point. So that's, the reason it says relocation is next week, the Select Board is going to discuss whether or not we hire a project manager to move this project forward because for the past three to four years, we've done studies that have come back and told us this would not be the best option for us for the long term. Now, if the Select Board decides they don't want to do long term, and we only really want to satisfy maybe five, 10, or 15 years, they can decide to do that. But that's, we were going with the recommendation of previous, a previous board to build on other work we'd already paid for.
I think.
I just find it hard to believe that you're only, you'd only get 10 to 15 years out of, I mean, depending on how much money you're going to plan on putting into buying or building a brand new building versus putting that money.
We have actually, Anne.
We have actually, Anne, if you.
Um, like to come in, I can show you the report, but today is not, this format isn't the format to debate that. And Al?
No problem. No, that's fine.
I'm not qualified to get into details. Yes, Al.
So, Anne, I think, two things. First, when we are lifted from being locked in our homes, I'd be happy to take you to the town of Colchester and show you how, over 20 years, the town evolved from rehabilitating its old town hall into building a brand new one. from rehabilitating its old town hall into building a brand new one and showing you how the brand new one had multiple compromises, which my successors have been built into the old, the new building to bring it up to snuff for the fifty to eighty years. But I think Carrie's original point is really something that the board needs to consider, and that is, how long do you want to stay in this? The building that you build or plan for, relocate, whatever you want to call it. Because if you look out into the future, one of the biggest complaints that we constantly hear is taxes are too expensive. And they're going to get more expensive, both through the climate change issues and obviously now dealing with this virus issue. So my feeling is that municipalities may not have that much longer life. And you may move to a regional government. And I think that that should go into your discussion. Get the people you need to hear from. But think through whether or not we need a town hall that's gonna last ten years or one that needs to last fifty years. Because that, to me, tells you where, what building you to use. If you want to use an old building, that's fine. Just, I will write to the select board an idea. My feeling is if you remove the town clerk's office from the existing building, knock out the old vault, then have your architects redesign that so it's the administrative office of the town, then, Anne, it's possible to meet your criteria for a ten-year town, ten, fifteen-year town hall. And then I have other ideas on what to do with the, with the town clerk's office, which is primarily responsible for maintenance of records.
Yeah, I'm just concerned with the financials and, you know, what are we gonna do with the old building?
Yeah.
We don't know where the whole country's going in the next year to ten years because of this pandemic. And, you know, the way they're talking recession, there's, there's a lot of talk, and if money's not there, what do we do?
Do you want me to call on people, Brendan, or are you going to?
Go ahead.
So Casey and Grant have something to say. Casey?
There's a point of clarification, Carrie. What was, there was a vote on town meeting day to keep that in the Bay though, correct?
Yes.
That passed?
There was a non-binding vote, yes.
Okay.
Yes, you are correct.
Okay, so when we look at relocating, it's gonna be in the, that doesn't include the village designation that we were talking about? Or is it just in the Bay Area?
I think it just said Bay Area.
Okay.
Grant?
I was just going to request maybe a point of order. Brendan, it would be, I think, helpful, and if you could, you know, call on folks for the planning commission. I feel like we are, I know this is a joint meeting, but it's, I think, a select board meeting first and foremost, where we're offering support. So probably go by, you know, general public comment type rules. So maybe raise our hands and wait to be called on by Brendan, I think would be the best way. Thank you.
Thank you, Grant. Okay, so we want to talk about, let's get back to where we were at. We were meeting, we're hiring a project manager. We decided that as long as the stay home, stay safe order was in full effect, that we would not with that project manager beyond reaching to terms. Is that correct, Carrie?
That's right. We decided, we put that, we put it out to bid, we that's where we were until you guys meet next week. I don't want to speak for you, but you were going to discuss it at next week's meeting.
That's pretty, that's a pretty good description of where we are. We hired a project manager, the town, the voters approved, keeping it in the Bay Area. We have that restriction. It's non-binding, but I think, I think the entire board agrees with the binding by that, since it was so overwhelming. Now that we had been reviewing one piece of land in the Bay Area, we're still reviewing that. No decisions have been made on that one. We have a price out of that person. So.
And if you want, briefly, just for the planning commission, we are moving forward with our salt shed. Obviously, we, the garage is done, but we couldn't have our open house like we wanted right now. The bids went out because that has V-Trans ties all over it, so it took a little longer. And the bids are going to hopefully be coming in in May. Our project manager for that is the same project manager for the garage, and he has been telling us that contractors are eager to work, but also cognizant of the atmosphere, and bids are coming in lower. He believes we're gonna get a fairly competitive. We're gonna get, get competitive bids for that project and hopefully still be able to build it this summer toward, and finishing it up in the late fall.
And so that's, that's pretty much where we're at. That's fair. So why don't, does anybody else from the select board have anything to add for the planning commission? Okay, so we're gonna move on to number, generate a report, Al.
The select board comment, are you going to move forward with the village designation?
Yeah, I think that's a priority we're gonna talk about. Yeah, when we, when we go to capital infrastructure projects and go prioritize projects for action plan, I think the Bay, Route Thirty-Six, that intersection, the village designation and town hall are all gonna kind of intertwine into discussion.
Okay, so if you go that route, then wouldn't it be prudent to also, we're talking about the capital plan and spending of money to get sidewalks going. Wouldn't it then be prudent, if you're going to go, the village designation is to build the sidewalks that are necessary to enhance the village and along going, along with the taking over the road from the state at that corner intersection?
Have the sidewalks built as part of taking it over, yeah. I think it would make sense. I, I think they're two separate projects. I think the village designation has its own life and the taking Route Thirty-Six over as a class on the highway. And then the improvements that we could ask for in exchange for doing that, I think they're separate, but they're kind of in the same vein.
Well, they enhance one another.
Right, definitely. So, no, they're two separate projects, but they're in the same school of thought of improving the Bay. Yeah, we're gonna get to that.
I mean, the select, the select board actually agreed on that in March. It's just that when I actually contacted the transportation staff in Montpelier, it was right about when the pandemic was breaking, and they suggested we hit the pause button because they were getting done what they needed to, to survive.
We were getting ready to go to negotiate.
Yep. Right, correct.
Right, so as far as the sidewalk master plan goes, Al, I believe that the way we have it organized at this point is we have sort of a tier one set that is a whole bunch of roads that we want to do with a priority, with a priority ranking. And then I think we also have a sort of as possible set, which is like Route Seven, Route Thirty-Six, you know, those. And so those, I think, would be heavily reliant on some amount of state funding or some, some agreement with the state to get them done. So I think that's all aligned. My point is, I think that's aligned with what you're saying. And I think it's aligned with where the select board is going. And I don't think we need further action on the sidewalk master plan at this point. Unless it would be helpful in terms of, you know, grant funding and that sort of thing, to see it as a higher priority.
I think your plan's fine. I agree with Grant. I don't think the plan needs anything. So I, I would say the master sidewalk plan review, we can complete that by saying that there's no, there's no changes necessary to get anything inch forward. Ned, do you agree with that? Somebody who writes a lot of our grants.
Yeah, the, the priority is fine, and the both sex, the, the Lake Road area in the village is a high priority. It's, I'm looking at the plan now, it's thirteen out of, you know, hundreds of segments, so it's, it's pretty high up.
Let's move on to the, did everybody got a copy of that list, Carrie, right, that spreadsheet? That the select board filled out, ranked priorities, kind of tried to fill out.
I'm not sure the planning commission got a copy of them all. We went back and forth a number of times.
I'm gonna go down this list.
Most of them are sidewalks.
I'm gonna go down this list. I'm gonna pick out anything that got a select board response. And then I want to address it, and then I want to talk about what it is, what we want to do next. Who should be responsible for that, whether it's PC, select board, or staff? And then set that next step as an actionable goal. And then try to assign some type of a date for it that we could check in with. I'd really like to have, on any priority that we come up with tonight, I would like to have it delegated, a goal, and then a date assigned to the, to that goal for a check-in. And that's, I think that's gonna be crucial for us, especially in that pandemic, not being able to meet. Oh, we've got, on page one of this spreadsheet that not everybody has, it's Phase One of the St. Albans Health Path, which is Collins, Pearly, DeSey Tech, and Gracebrook. And would include, in our mind, a curb cut for Gracebrook. And that was ranked on an average of four out of five by select board members. And I mean, these rankings aren't that, they aren't that rock solid, but. So Carrie and Ned, I'm gonna kind of rely on you because you've been the ones working on this more so than anybody else. Where do you think the next step is? And who do you think should get us there? And when do you think we should be there by?
Do you want me to start? Yeah, so the, the health path is that path that just gets us across the St. Albans State Highway or the SASH. It's what would connect, you know, the Collins, Pearly side of those population across the street to Gracebrook. Right now, we're, Ned's actively working with a consultant to do the things that V-Trans told us we needed to do to be more successful for this project. I mean, they specifically laid it out. John Kaplan sent us an email, went over that, you know, it's like, I don't know, fifteen things. We got a thirty thousand dollar grant to do that. That's supposed to be done June. And then after that, we were planning to apply for a grant, a V-Trans grant, a much larger, more robust V-Trans grant to try to get funding to partially pay for this, hoping that if we have it on the next ballot, that people would be supportive of the project if we had grant funds. So I, I don't know, Ned can add to that, but I don't know that this needs to be assigned to a committee. We're gonna end up with a camel. I mean, we've already got.
I'm just saying, staff, planning commission, or select board. This sounds like it's a hundred percent staff.
It's, it's staff, and just as I spoke to the consultants late last week, some of their, some of their people should be out in the field in the next couple of weeks. You'll see them doing a natural resources inventory of the area, along with some other basic survey work. V-Trans just put out guidelines for that work today, and I see no problems with them going out in the next couple of weeks to get it done. They know full well that we want this, the, the project back from them ASAP. And they also understand that we're going for funding later in the summer. So they're, they're fully cognizant, and they understand what's going on.
The only other wrinkle that was both, that surprised, I think, both Ned and I, was that we were at a meeting with V-Trans and David Blackmore suggested to us that we might also be successful taking over the SASH. I don't, and we, we kind of looked in, and I said, yeah, but that's never, that's not usually a very fast process either. And he certainly implied to both of us that it could be. So, I mean, we could, we could go down both roads if you wanted something.
It's kind of like a quid pro quo, click the road over, maintain it, and then we'll do the improvements that you want anyway.
And, and.
We're gonna give you grant funding for.
And the city would support that. They have told us offline they would support it because the part down near Route Seven, like from that emergency access through seven is in, on, in the city, city project.
I guess we'll have to talk about it in a different.
Yeah, anyway, so for the future, I think this project is moving forward. It just doesn't ever move fast, no matter which direction we run at it.
All right, so that's our update on that, to sign to staff, and we heard some, we're gonna get that back in June, apply for grants later and some of them. Jessica had mentioned in her priority list of wanting to continue on with the Route Seven North project. Ed worked on a joint study. Ned, you want to take that away and talk about that a little bit? And Jessica, you can talk about your priority. Wanna go, where you want to go from here?
All, that one, that one still needs some grant applications in the near future. It also needs to sort of connect the dots and get some other interest in it. The problem is, is that connecting the dot segments are all out at the Walmart to say Everready. The problem, the, the segments that have no infrastructure to connect from Everready into the city line, and those are gonna be the most difficult sections and the most expensive. So they're there. We need to take this on in bits and pieces and bite, sort of bite-sized chunks, just so we don't take on something too big or put something out for a town meeting day vote that's overzealous and gets voted down and puts us back.
Jessica, how do you feel about what you just said?
No, that makes sense. I just wanted to keep it on the list because in 2023, it's going to be repaved. Jim Cota, I forget if Amy or I had reached out to him, but it's on the paving schedule. So if there's stuff that we need to do in the coming years as far as planning, I just want to make sure we're moving forward on that. And, and the other piece of it, there is that advisory group that still meets monthly. And they're very interested in going out and talking to businesses and trying out some demos. We were gonna do it this summer, but maybe not, but it'd be nice to be coordinating with the town. So we're doing the sections that the town wants to do first. So that when the time comes, we'll have all that buy-in from the community and from the business owners out there. So I just would like to see maybe a little more integration with the town on that project. And if there are some steps between the last consultant we had and what we need to do to build in possibly three years, that we're, we're moving it forward.
Yeah, that's agreeable. So where do we, Ned, where do we go from here? Where we are to where Jessica wants to be, what do we need to do next?
The one good thing in a repaving job is, we can put, their, V-Trans is, I'll say, amenable to putting, to restriping the road in a configuration that we may, that might be beneficial for us in terms of putting in slightly wider shoulders, moving where the lanes are just a little bit. So it's beneficial. It is a top three priority for the town in our bike and pet plan, so it's moving forward in that way. The one thing to keep in mind is that it's a repaving job. It's not a rebuild job. The cracks that are there today, even after the repaving, will be back again in the future. So it, the concrete that's underlying will not be removed. They're just gonna put another layer on top. So it's, it's annoying, but it's gonna help us in the future. We'll, we'll make sure we integrate with them to make sure we get a, and I'm saying this intentionally, a full width repaving. V-Trans has a tendency to shortchange the width on paving, but we'll make sure when a project comes out that it's full width.
Grant?
So I was noticing, and I don't know if this may be more of a public comment kind of a comment than a planning commission kind of a comment, but as I was out over the past few days, what I've noticed is that I think people are developing much better sort of health habits from being quarantined and, and away from the world. Hardak was packed. Every access to the rail trail was packed. I mean, people are outside, they're doing, you know, we've been to, even, I've been out with my kids, we've been to various state parks, we've been to Mexico, we've done all this stuff. I think if there's a time to be talking pedestrian infrastructure and not to be afraid of a vote or something like that, I, I think we're there, right? So I think that we would have more support now, if people can maintain these good habits moving forward, for what it's worth.
We do have cash on hand, too. Got a little bit of money, a few hundred thousand infrastructure reserve. You need to be earmarked for a town hall, and we can keep saving for that, or we could decide to develop some actions with some infrastructure projects and start spending some money. I guess we gotta make a decision if that's where we want to go this year or not. Jessica, what do you think?
Oh, I mean, I think Route Seven is a huge safety issue. I mean, people are walking it every day. Anybody, everybody on this call has seen it, you know, people with strollers, walking on a nonexistent shoulder and sidewalk. And it's not, I mean, as much as I do want to see sidewalks at the Bay and the Quam Shore, it's a totally different issue. That's recreation. This is getting your groceries and getting to work and helping people who don't have access to transportation. And there can be a, you know, recreational component that comes out of it if we do it right. So I just think Route Seven is so visible and important to our community. But I'll take a sidewalk anywhere.
So that said, I want to keep Route Seven on my radar. And if it comes a good time to start talking about maybe putting an actual project together, we're ready to do so as soon as this year. Talking about it, maybe put something on the ballot?
I would also like the, the committee that Jessica's referencing to regularly work, at least with Ned, so that we do know what's going on and can plan.
And do you have a good interaction with that? Ned, do you have a good interaction with them?
I interact with them on a, not exactly a monthly basis, but I do get all their emails. I try to attend most of the meetings.
Okay. Um, anything anybody else wants to add to Route seven and that project? Okay, so the next big priority and it was. It was uh, MS four and funding those projects. And we want to fund the annual costs out of the general fund or create a utility that's on the list. So I'm uh, wondering if it'd be a good time for Ned to provide an update as to where the planning commission is with the consultant and when we can expect a report back.
Okay, you you me, me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, he, I just spoke with the consultants late last week also. And I have a spreadsheet that I can circulate that shows the initial, their initial cut of what they think. Is is viable and a viable rate. I don't have it up on my screen right now, but it's in line with the other communities that have MS fours and. Uh, stormwater utilities and it's. It'll generate somewhere, it it it'll generate more than sufficient funds. It it ends up being, if I can. If I can find it, it ends up being a very reasonable thing in the fifty dollar uh, annual fee based over a monthly period. And it's assessed from every lot owner, no matter what the uh. I'll I'll leave it at that for right now. It's a very reasonable fee and I can circulate to everybody on the on this uh, call in a, after I'm done.
But when is that study supposed to be done?
The the study should be done in the next uh, eight weeks or so. And they should be, they're well on the way and I don't see a problem with that at all.
If I put July one, we're gonna have a study in hand.
Oh, I wa- I want it before July one. I'd like to have it in uh, to staff somewhere. I want to say June first or June fifteen, something in that ballpark.
Let's let's come back to that with a realistic to dead on a deadline. We can actually meet. I mean, I don't want to set a deadline and then fail to reach it. So is it July first or?
But I I think they're far enough along and I will uh, I will check with them tomorrow to find out what a reasonable, they feel is reasonable.
So we're gonna get an update on that tomorrow. But that is a, that's a high ranking priority for a lot of people. For me, it was number two. For Jonathan, it was number one. It's a, it's a pretty big deal. Uh, where are we at Ned with? The projects that we had on hand that we had to wrap up from last year, stormwater?
Sorry, but Grant has a question, Brendan.
Sorry.
Well, just just going back to stormwater for a moment, um, we have uh, sort of been communicating with the consultant, being Ned. Um, it's been really hard to organize anything, um, let's sit down, obviously. Um, but um, the other big part of that is not just how much it's gonna cost, but what services are provided um, by the town. And getting that, I think, squared away was, was also, it that wasn't necessarily buttoned down completely. Um, you know, if you were gonna pay into this thing, does that mean that, you know, your stormwater facilities? Um, we're gonna be town maintained at that point or that you, you know, had an opportunity to, you know, get some work at cost? Or, you know, what the exact uh, agreements were gonna be for that. So I think that was still up in the air, um, last I knew, anyway.
It it's a, it's much more tied down than that and they're, they've gotten very far off into the weeds on like staffing and full time equivalents and various things and equipment. So it's it's, it's very well brought out at this point, so.
We're just gonna have to look at what they come up with, make a few edits, and then we could have an actionable utility.
Uh, yes, that is, that is the intention of the study.
So do you think we could go to form the utility as soon as November or are we looking at March?
Oh, I I think November would be more than sufficient.
Okay, well, let's try to do that then.
Yeah.
Right, so that's, that's our, one of our top ranking goals. Let's uh. Okay, November, we're gonna go for a utility. Does that sound reasonable to everybody? Okay, hearing nothing, we're gonna move on. Um. We're to the town hall project. Um, high ranking priority, average out of the select orders, two out of five. Yes, uh. So we're establishing who has the that ball in their court. I think that's the select board at this point, Aaron.
I just, uh, there was, uh, both Stan and I were, we also just noted to finish the DPW Brigham Road project was a priority as well.
Right, oh, definitely.
Yeah, that's just, I think that's, I just want to put it out there.
Yeah, we're gonna get that finished up and Carrie had given an update. We're working on the salt shed with uh, we should have some bits back by the end of this month. End of next month, sorry.
Yeah.
Thank you. Yep, sorry about that, Aaron. Must have scrolled one too hard. Um, so the town hall project is in the select board's court. We talked about where it's at. Um. There's some mixed feedback on how fast we should be moving with it. Um, I'm interested to hear what planning commissioners have to say. Should, so originally the thought was take the sixty-five thousand dollars from the article that was approved on town meeting day. Immediately hire a project manager, which we're working to that end. And then develop an action plan with a price tag to put in front of the voters in November for them to approve. Where a spring twenty twenty-one construction start. The pandemic may have shifted that to March. Uh, but I'm interested in hearing what you guys have to say about that. What's your feedback is? Start with Al.
I think we have to develop a series of of questions that we need to answer. I don't know that I could even come close to saying whether we should go for November or March at this point because of the um. Way to place the town hall, whether it stays in the village or uh, elsewhere. When you look at the environment and how long you want the building to last and things like that. I still think there are a lot of questions that we need to answer before we move forward. As to the the project that we're hiring the consultant for. His or her um, analysis will ju- will just tell us that the space needs we need for a given population. I would say on the population basis, I think you need to look at doubling the town's population. So that, how much, how many staff do we need to have a a town of twelve thousand people?
Right, Ned?
According to last population uh, projections that I saw and that came up in one of our studies. I forget exactly which study it was. I should know that off the top of my head, I'm sorry. But uh, St. Albans Town, not St. Albans City, St. Albans Town was going to receive. Of approximately seventy-five percent of the growth that's gonna occur over the next twenty years in Franklin County was gonna be inside our community. So we should plan on fairly robust uh, changes. Now, that was only, I thi- I forget exactly the numbers, but it's a fair, it's a fairly big number.
Yes, right, right, Grant?
Yeah, I mean, just to maybe put some estimates behind that, uh, my understanding is that growth in the town has been one to two percent uh, per year. Um, yeah, I've seen some nods. Um, Rule seventy-two puts that at a thirty-five to forty-year doubling. And that's what we're trying to get to for what I was talking about. Um, so if you're trying to right-size the town for forty years from now, um, you know, then are we talking, we may be talking about a a. Building or a uh, town hall that's got that forty-year plan. Um, you know, you wouldn't, you wouldn't want to build it so big that it's the right size, just as it's going out of commission in twenty years, right? For the, for twenty years down the road after that. Um, if you're gonna, if you're gonna build it for doubling, build it to be forty-year, for a forty-year life, Dan also.
Just want to add one more thing. I do believe with global climate, you're gonna see a great migration from the Atlantic coast. Keep the westward.
Casey, you're a state representative. You you talk to constituents probably more than all of us put together. It had to be. What do you think the pandemic should do to our thought process as far as project planning goes? Should we be ramping up for infrastructure dollars or should we be hunkering down to potentially weather a second wave? What are you hearing?
Uh, the answer is yes. I think we've had some really good conversations tonight about being the ones to restart and and do um, the projects that are shovel-ready. Um, that's kind of what we talked about when we we've mentioned that. Uh, we talked about that at our last planning commission meeting. Right now, we are really uncertain as a state about where our money's gonna come in from. Um, one example to talk about is we're usually out of the legislature mid-May. We're going to be there till June thirtieth to pass a budget and we're gonna have to come back in three months, maybe less, to pass a second budget. Because we have no idea what the economic um, impacts are as a state. Um. One thing, you know, you're gonna look at somebody's unemployed for three months or two months. Next year, they're gonna claim on their their taxes that um, you know, they went two months unemployed. That two months unemployed is gonna affect their property tax rates and what they're gonna be paying. That's gonna affect our school budgets. That's one aspect. Um, that's going to uh, mess with their municipality rates and and things like that. So that's something we also have to consider. Uh, what is, what does the future of business look like in the twenty-first century post-COVID? Businesses are going to adapt. We're gonna see some close. A lot of them are struggling right now. They're not open. Um, people are making more money right now unemployed. Are their employees gonna come back? Um, these are really big issues that people in the business community, people in schools. Um, they talked about closing three colleges last week. That's another, you know. Where is our money as a state going to change? Where are we going to put that money? Are there gonna be enough money availability towards grants? Are we gonna have money to go to schools? Where are we gonna do that? And that's something that's really, really troublesome to look at in the future. I know we're gonna come through, we're gonna, we're gonna be able to figure it out um, as a state. And I think the St. Albans Town has been a really, if you take a look at St. Albans Town historically, we're the ones that are growing. We are the um, commu- communities that are doing well. We are pulling population two to three percent, like we said, every year. Uh, that's not because of anything other than the leadership we have. I appreciate everyone on this call right now. Um, but we also have a great location and we have a great community. So there's a lot of selling points to where we are in geographically and where we are as a state. Um, but the state of Vermont's been struggling to find people to come here. That's the question. Um, that's been the question. And how do we get more people here to grow? And how do we attract more people to St. Albans? So that's just my two cents. I don't know if anyone has anything to follow up on that, but. It's kind of uncertain right now.
If you were a select board member right now, Representative Two, would you encourage moving forward with the plan to try to have a vote on the ballot in November? Or would you encourage us to exercise caution?
That's good. That's a, that's a really tough question, Brendan, but uh, I would.
I know, that's why I'm asking.
I would go on the caution side. Um, like I said, we do have projects that are ready to go. We do have money. We are, there's, I mean, there's a reason we have money. We've been really, I I say we, I shouldn't even put me in that category. Uh, this board has been really um, really cautious and really that very well planned um, for the last, you know. Twenty, thirty years with the St. Albans Town. Like I said, there's no reason, there's, there's a reason why we are where we are. And we're in a good position and and that's great. And I think we should, you know, s- just take it easy and see where we're at after June. Um, when this, when things start opening back up personally, because things, we're still pushed out to June first before, you know, we're a hundred percent, maybe. Hundred percent back in business. Does that answer, does that answer your question, Brendan?
So you're kind of thinking November might be a little soon, but maybe it's okay to plan as if March might work out and then see what happens with the pandemic and aftermath or?
Maybe, I mean, this uh, this select board's done great things in the past and last few years. I think you guys have done, uh, I think this whole group's done a great uh, great job. But I would still go with caution. We, I I feel like a lot of people are thinking it's gonna be business as usual and we go back to work. I think we're gonna see a huge change um, in our society, in our business, in how people spend and how people will um, like to see things work. Uh, Grant is one hundred percent right. Uh, I was, I went to every single, I went to the town forests this weekend. Hardak, I went out of the bay. Um, I utilize all of our great resources and I think that's one thing, I think you're gonna see a lot more people choosing the outside, um, the outdoor stuff. So that, those are important projects that we should focus on. Um, I also think when we look at the town hall, we listen to the voters and. Keep the block, keep the town hall where the voters wanted it. Um. But where, you know, what's, what's ready to go is ready to go. I mean, does anyone else have anything to say about that? I know that I kind of just rambled on, but Grant?
Yeah, I would say that if you have a plan in November and it's a good business decision. I think that asking voters to authorize the funds for a good business decision may not be a bad idea. But you're gonna have to read the room, right? You're gonna have to look around and figure out what's what's going on. I think you'll have um, in November, um, you know, and I think maybe we saw this in uh, March as well. Uh, you know, this, the school budget passed by a landslide. We had a lot of projects that passed easily. And I think it's because it was piggybacking a democratic primary, you know? So I think that you're gonna have a lot of Democrats turn out in November. Um, and I think that will help you pass um, you know, anything that calls for funding. Uh, so you you'll have to, you'll have to take all that into consideration when you, when you put it to a vote. I think if you get to November and you don't have a great plan that hasn't been well communicated, um, I don't think people will support it. Then you'll have to push it off till March.
Stan, I'm looking at you. What do you think we should do? Stanley?
Yes, go ahead.
What do you think we should do? November or March? I want to just have a date set so we can start working towards that date.
I didn't, I'm thinking March.
Alright, so it's in the select board's court. The next process, the next step in the process is to secure a project manager, which we're working on Monday. And then we're gonna wait for some of the pandemic restrictions to be relaxed. And we will begin working with that person to identify the needs of the organization, how that relates to space. And then um, every discussion that we have about that will be done in a public eye with input from the public. And um, we'll make decisions as we go and then organically develop a plan. Um, it's good business sense, Grant said, like that's a good business decision. Does anybody have anything else that they want to add to the town hall? I hear no one. Um, nobody marked down the Loop Road or the two oh seven extension. Um, that's a new issue. Uh, just in case anybody was wondering, the Route thirty-six base of door intersection, I think that intertwines quite a bit with uh. A village designation for the Bay Area and improving the Bay Area and reaffirming our intent to continue to invest in the Bay. Um, and I think you could even lump in the the stonehouse renovations. I know Jonathan was the only one who marked it in his top five, but I do think that's an important priority, especially because it's a lot of gig workers that work on that. We have the money in hand. I know we've talked about it before as a select board and decided that the pace we were going with that project was. It was successful and that we should maintain that pace. Um, given the pandemic and the, the fact that a lot of this work that needs to be done to that building is done by contractors that could be sourced locally. That have been told to stay home and not allowed to work. I don't know that it's not in our best interest right now, given the fact that people want to make low bids. And uh, the fact that people need money in their pockets and want to work. Um, to maybe move ahead with more than just the electrical and start to nail down the next steps of that process, given that we have more than. A hundred thousand dollars on hand to be able to start putting into that building. Again, to to loop back to the um, the Route thirty-six. The select board agreed to begin negotiating with the state to take that road over as a, as a class one. Grant, have a question?
Yeah, we we glossed over the Loop Road, uh, but uh, high priorities, I think, were the health path. And also we talked about the Sash and we've also spent some time talking about sidewalks. I think that um, in the event where we have ownership of Sash and also put in the health, the health path. Um, you know, a plan for, or a position on that Loop Road and a plan on how to incorporate that would be important. Um, because it's gonna severely change the traffic pattern at that intersection. Um, and it could also feed into prioritization of um, you know, sidewalks elsewhere in town that would see lower traffic of uh, auto traffic. And then so become.
You're saying keep it on the radar as part of those other projects?
I'm saying keep it on the radar, maybe have a position or a tentative plan in place for it. I think a lot of that is work that's done by the city and so we would be sort of partners. I think a lot of that is work that's done by the city, and so we would be sort of partners in that, but we need to know how, how we'd react. Um if that were to go faster rather than slower.
That's something that the planning commission could probably look at at some point in the near future. What do you think about that, Ned? Grant, I know Grant's gone after this.
I, I think the, the loop road in terms of a design and planning is sort of out of the planning commissions. Out of their house at this point, it might be a little bit in there. They might get some commentary to the select board, but I think it's really a, all through the select board at this point, because it's. The design and location is sort of done at this point, the planning commissions. Daily with might come in in terms of traffic planning and some other recommendations.
That's what I'm thinking, Amir, I think Grant, and correct me if I'm wrong, Grant, you were saying that we should have a plan in place to. Maybe implement the loop road to deal with some negative traffic pattern effects of our other priorities.
Right, so I've kind of been an advocate for some years now of um traffic calming on Fairfax especially. Um but also uh Upper Wild and Fairfield Street, um that whole area, and in order to do that, you have to divert traffic to a Sash. Um now you have the health path going in. Uh which is sort of counter to that, right? That's gonna put pedestrian traffic there. And then if you do the loop road, now you're gonna get even more traffic on the Sash, you essentially have two competing interests. Um between the health path and then everything else that puts traffic onto the Sash. Um and so that's the sort of thing that you're gonna have to reconcile.
So when we talk about the loop road, what we were thinking when we put this on here is the road that would run parallel to Route seven north. That would go off of two oh seven, when you get off exit twenty and go straight, go all the way down to federal um. Lower Wellden, I think, no, not Lower Well, Lower Newton, that's the loop road that we had once talked about. Um it's not.
And that at one point included a provision for making the end of the Sash a four-way intersection.
It did, it did, okay, I just want to make sure we're all on the same page.
Yeah.
Maybe we circulate a copy of the last set of plans that we had, just to start to educate people on that, what do we think? We maybe track that down, send out an email to everybody on the call.
Yeah, we have an eleven by seventeen, we can do that. Um the state told us because of the wetlands that until we get a concrete developer, we're not likely to get very. Far in that project, on that project, as much as I liked it.
I was gonna say, I think, I think it's just a matter of having a preferred approach that is feasible.
And do you think anybody wants to add to that before we move back on to the bay? Okay, so we're gonna get a set of the last plans sent out just to educate everyone, what we're talking about in case anybody didn't know. Bay dock improvements could all, we spent a lot of money on that study, and we have a lot of information about it. And unfortunately, the, the end result was it would be really expensive, raise that dock to a point where we would never be underwater. I see nobody marked it as a top five priority in the select board, which tells me that we're kind of satisfied with where we are. We like what we're doing with the parklet, we like, the public likes what we're doing with the parklet, and we're just gonna keep going with that. That's fine, it means, but I just.
I don't know, I just want to say, Brendan, I don't know if that means that we're completely satisfied, I think it just means that if we have to pick five, that wasn't.
Right, right.
But.
Satisfied to, when I say satisfied, I mean satisfied to not work on this year.
Okay, yeah.
Sorry, Brendan, so I want to get back to that stonehouse, because we've been doing a lot of talking about, we've got cash on hand and actionable projects. Um we talked about just doing electrical, that might be a good priority to delegate to staff to see if it might make sense to ramp that up a little bit to start. You know, helping with that recovery process with all of these small-time gig workers, contractors. Curious, Jessica, what do you think? Jessica's muted, so.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, that sounds like a fine idea, I also, my mind was thinking about, you'd skipped over the crosswalk at Collins Pearly, I just had a question about that.
Yeah, I figured we'd hit all of the bay oriented projects and then go back. Um because I think all of these bay project kind of lend themselves to one vision that we might be generating for the Bay Area. So uh village designation, that's in the planning commission's court right now. Just at that town hall, the town plan amendment, we're working on that, so Ned, what's the next step?
Next step is fill out the application, and we have one more ta- uh town plan hearing to do, and then fill out the application, send everything in.
Okay, we're right on track with that. We're gonna work on generating potential speed up process of expedited process of the work on the stonehouse.
So does Ann, does Ann have a question? I see a little hand raised, and then Al, and then Al.
Yeah, my question is, with the pullout of the plan, why can't we move that stonehouse work up?
Well, I was never, we have a hundred thousand. And, okay, thank you, um so we have over a hundred thousand dollars in the books right now from a donation related to. That whole project built out that we earmarked specifically for the stonehouse. So when we say speed up that work, we're talking about liquidating that money or investing that money on that asset faster than we had planned to previously. Um the, the pool didn't have any type of a tie-in, uh but yeah, that is out of the picture. Um we haven't discussed bringing that back at all. So let's, let's talk about, Al?
Yes, um I think we also need to look at a project to raise money. Um for the stonehouse, remember we started off with memorial benches and the tree inside the building? To recognize people and things like that, and I think we need to reinvigorate that project to attract donations to the building.
Do a rotary and style approach to it, Al?
You can.
Carrie, you, you're an expert as far as rotary fundraising goes. Um I kind of defer to you on that one, you're muted right now, I'm wondering if you might speak to Al's point.
As far as the stonehouse building goes?
Yeah, and then maybe fundraising for it.
I'm not prepared to go into a fundraising plan, but I know our Rotary Club, I mean, Warren Hamm is, is a pretty good fundraiser and all by himself, but. Um I mean, we did put that up together a plan, um haven't advertised it yet, so I. And I'm not feeling very creative tonight, but we have a great plan and it went um pretty. Pretty well for about a few months, and then we just got busy and moved on, so to that point, we should reinvigorate it.
Memorial, definitely, seeing the tree that was associated with that.
Well, it became an, um really a scheduling challenge last year with trying to get a couple of things done and, and having a fairly short season. So Alan worked on some of the things, but obviously not all of them, we also have a grant to also do the cupola, it's gonna be copper. Um repaint the whole thing and, and fix it, and, and they're doing all the doors right now, so we are actively working on the stonehouse. Just not the electrical part, I don't think we developed a scope of work for that yet. So if you wanted to find what it is you'd like to do going forward, other than maybe we do a few presentations at Rotary and on. And have the cable company come down and.
Yeah, we can work on something, maybe the Parks Committee who worked on the memorial, this policy would be able to come up with a fundraising idea. Or improvements to the stonehouse.
It's, it's always good to ask for more money, it's, it, people love the stonehouse, we should advocate for that.
Okay, so let's. Talk about a lot of things, but I think everybody kind of knows what they need to work on, stonehouse. Um again, Route thirty six, the base door intersection, we're gonna negotiate with the state on that, but that's on hold, be transparent predicament. Um so let's go back to the crosswalk at Collins Pearly in the complex, so. Tim Beens took over for Dave Kimmel, pretty immediately approached Carrie and I and said, hey Wilson, I'm tired of watching kids almost get hit by cars every afternoon. And we gotta figure this one out, like, let's get this over with. And Carrie and I met with him and his new number two, uh my cousin Mark, and. We need to develop support for it, we need to figure out the partners involved, um a lot of it's already kind of on paper, there've been drawings. And um. It needs, it needs some funding and uh we need to develop local support for it, it's a major safety issue though. So I know Jessica'd wanted to talk about it, but that's where. The, the last interaction that the town had with the school district or anybody at Collins Pearly was when Carrie and I met with Tim. And um I think we were pretty supportive of it in the meeting, I, I think we gave him good, good reason to believe that we would support it. It's uh, it's just making an actionable plan.
Alan was. Alan was asked to um. Provide another budget, which um he did to Tim, and we met at least on over the phone to talk about. A lower budget and splitting it up between four or five en- entities, and Tim was going to approach the school, this is probably. Not really great timing, to be honest, but um you know, we were trying to get it into five smaller bites that maybe Jolly's. The hotel, the town and the school at minimum could each take a small bite of. Um and it seemed to be achievable, but I don't know how successful he was with the school board at this point.
Maybe Carrie, if you wanted to touch back with Tim, take his pulse on that. Grant, you think that's something that Tim could bring to the district board, see some light at the end of a tunnel, or is it maybe in that tongue?
Uh I can't speak on behalf of the school board on this one, um so I'm going to uh sit back from this discussion, if that's alright.
Al?
What's the cost, what's the cost that you estimate?
I believe it was around eighty-five thousand, originally we had it at about a hundred and thirty. Um but if we did some in-kind work and Tim and his crew said they would help a little bit, um we thought we could get it done, I think it was about eighty-five thousand dollars.
God, that's peanuts.
If you. Especially if we divided into four or five pieces, we thought it was doable at that point, but.
Yeah, I mean, Carrie, I guess we could just ask that you stay focused on that when you have time for it. Eighty-five thousand of the partners, if we can't figure out a solution at the end of the summer. Definitely won't be the town's. Al?
Um the issue of speed on uh one oh four, um has that been resolved with the state? Setting, setting the lower speed limit down, I think to forty miles per hour?
Uh we had an initial permit, so I would say yes, they, at first the speed study that we did or our first request was denied. Because they said the average speed was too high, um but we did, and it did get a permit from them. Or at least of the, um what do they call it, the pre-permit thing, where they said if you follow these plans. Um so I think that part, that's, that's the beautiful part about this, we had worked through all the red tape. We had meetings at, on site with their engineers and, you know, the ten people from Vtrans that show up when you do those things, so. The stumbling block was funding primarily.
Tax.
Who we uh. Let's talk about the town forest master trail plan, um I think that's gonna come up Monday night, Jessica.
Mm-hmm.
Speak to that.
Yeah, so it's very exciting, because it's been probably five years, Carrie and I have been working on this, accumulating grants and. Get every, everything lined up, and uh the work will be done up there within a month or two. Um for those of you who don't know all the details, a trail builder, his name is Brooke Satchard, he works for Sinuosity is the name of his company. He's built mountain bike trails in Stowe, all over New England, he's very well renowned. Um and his crew's gonna be finishing up there, I did get to go up Saturday and walk some of them, um they're not all marked, but once they're done. Alan has already purchased some signs, and if you go on the Rise Vermont Facebook page, and I don't know if it got shared to the town yet. But we are doing a trail naming contest for four trails that are not named yet, so share it around, if you have any ideas, let us know. And um. Yeah, so it's gonna be done, which is, it's, it's just, it's taken so long and now it'll finally be done. And it kind of leads me in, I don't know if Brendan, you want me to talk about the, the town forest year-round access? Um I do think that once these trails are built, it will draw people to the area to seek them out, especially in light of everything going on. People are gonna be looking for new trails that they haven't gone on yet. And right now, we can't access the town forest in the winter. And I would like to keep pushing on that to see if there's a way that we can make that road accessible in the winter. Um because I know people do want to go up there in snowshoe and Nordic ski in the winter months as well. Um.
Yes, if I could.
Well.
So when we were looking at the right of way that the town had or didn't have with that, with Forest Drive, um our lawyers. One lawyer in particular dug around in the land records and said, you know, I'm not seeing much. And it could get very expensive to keep looking, is what I think the way we left it. And at this point, maybe a year, eighteen months down the line since we got that answer, it seems like it. You know, if you've got, I know we left a little bit of money in the town manager legal line. If we could get an estimate from our attorneys and how many powers they think that they might have into that, and then make that decision as a select board. Maybe Carrie, if it's under the five thousand dollars and you just wanna go for it and get it over with. Um we should get more of a concrete answer, what we have or don't have in the land records, and what that does to hurt or help us.
Well, that was the step, that was the next step, because after that, he suggested that we do a reclassification hearing and. Um classify the road instead of a class four as a class three, because to Jessica's point, as a class four road, we. We have minimal maintenance required on it, um.
Or required, we could decide to do whatever we wanted, but.
That's what I was wondering, if, because I know guys from the mountain bike club have talked to um. The bee guy, I don't want to call him the bee guy, I can't remember his name, but his major concerns are about his garden being encroached on.
Palmer, Mike Palmer.
Mike Palmer, that's right, so if there was some way to even not change it, but to just say, we'll plow the road if you let us. Clear out that parking lot. We don't have to get in the weeds, I guess, at this meeting, but I'm just wondering if there's other ways to go about it. And I think Alan was gonna go out and talk to him this spring, but we'll probably have to wait at this point. Well, that's why we needed the legal research. Hmm.
We need to know what we have, be able to approach. So I say we move forward on legal unless it's an exorbitant amount of hours, Carrie, um how does the rest of the board feel about that? Stan, you're French Hill, French Hill, what do you think?
Will we gonna talk about French Hill or Forest Drive?
We're, we're talking about Forest Drive right now, then we're gonna talk.
If, if we were to plow it, there was a lot of roads we'll be plowing, because we can't do.
Right.
One side of the equation, we gotta do the other side.
Yeah, it's almost like we have to take it up to a class three.
Yeah.
To differentiate it from the other fours.
We get all those people at Tanglewood that we, they, they would love to have us plow and solve.
Let's uh, so let's figure out what we've got up there, um figure out what the costs are gonna be for the legal. Um capital plan. And we're doing strategic planning, we talked about the stonehouse, so let's talk about French Hill, we're almost to the end, Grant?
Yeah, um if we're talking mainly about winter access and we have someone that's, um you know, reasonable trail builder. There may be other access points too, uh you know, if you don't have to build summer type trails, it's a matter of taking out some trees. Um you know, if you only have to have, uh you know, good access when you have, say, a foot or two of snow. Um I think there's some other roads making up that way these days, um where you may be able to gain some access for. Um maybe less than legal fees, I don't know. Just.
Hey, Grant. Anybody have anything else about Forest Drive before we move on to French Hill Road? Okay, so French Hill Road, um it's nothing short of an embarrassment to the town at this point, that it hasn't been fixed. And. Had to figure something out, um and Carrie, do you want to talk about where you and Alan are with that?
Um the last time we analyzed that, we had anticipated there was at least four major sections that needed. Not major, there's four sections of the road that needed improvement, they were the worst four sections of the road. Um and we were. I don't remember what the action item at that point was, because I know Alan and I have asked um at some budget meetings to support that, and it wasn't approved. So at this point, I guess I'm looking to figure out if there's support to do the next. support to do the next section, you know, maybe we just peel off one section at a time. Because I don't believe in an engineer agreed that we, we don't necessarily have to do the entire road. There's section of, sections that are fine. But up near Stan's, for instance, it's curved the wrong way. The drainage is horrible. And so there are places that are going to need quite a bit of work, but not the entire road. So I'm just looking for, I guess, some direction on how, how much funding and how much, what kind of scope of work are we talking about here? Because that's, that's real money when we start adding up all four of the problematic sections.
Stan, you marked French Hill Road repairs as your number one priority.
Only because of this. Safety issue is my primary reason for marking it a one priority.
Okay, you are, or Al?
Stan, what were the four areas that needed repair?
I don't have that list in front of me, but one of them was right near Stan's house. This isn't why it's on the list, by the way, just qualifying that for poor Stan. One of them is near yours. One of them is also near, and it also, that one also connects around the corner to Fred Lake Road.
Arnold's property.
Yep. And then another one is not too far past the Fred Lake Road intersection where there's a dip in the road. There's just a problem there as well.
Okay.
That, I think those are the four big ones that we knew about. They'd fix the one in front of Ron Bonnet's, which is near my driveway.
Yep.
Also no, not on purpose, but because that used to have a really bad frost heat that would be unsafe in the wintertime. And it's held up for years. So our crew, if we dedicate time and a little bit of money to it, can do some of them. I don't know that our crew can do the reconfiguration of Stan's, that corner there. Ned has also separately been working and gotten knowledge of some stormwater funding that we hear might be coming to the state. And it's important for this conversation because this money is supposed to be directed towards those areas along the interstate that drain directly under the interstate or near the interstate and cause problems, which this road does. All of the water that comes off French Hill right there on the face of the hill and then goes underneath the highway is causing some problems.
Ed, can you talk about that, that money?
Actually, French Hill is actually in two drainage basin, what they call Basin Five and Basin Six. Basin Five is the part that goes down the hill toward the interstate. Basin Six is the part that goes towards Fred Lake and off to the Mississauga Valley. Both, both basins are going to get a fair amount of money to do some drainage work above and beyond what we have for the MS four. And they're specifically designed to reduce phosphorus. Phosphorus is related to erosion specifically and speed of water. So both of those program, both of those basins are going to hopefully have some money. The state's talking some real money. This was, their real money talk was before the COVID nineteen pandemic. So we'll have to see, but the key thing is here, they are under the gun from EPA to get these things done. And when, you know, they have signed agreements with the EPA to get these things done before twenty thirty-two. So there's hundreds of millions of dollars involved. So Kerry and I have been making sure that at least we have one body at every one of these meetings. The funny thing is, there was a meeting last week sometime. I was the only town employee from any town in all of Northern Vermont that even participated. And it got a surprising reaction from our local EPA rep, rep that it was, in his terms, a little town participating. It was happy to know that we were recognized, but I think having somebody at every one of these meetings is important and we'll continue to do that. But it, there, these are not going to be, you know, hundreds of millions of dollars. These are going to be in the five hundred thousand and less range projects, but it's still good to get online and get ready and get up and going and be a participant in this stuff, in these grant funding opportunities that will be coming up soon.
Thank you, Ned, Grant.
Who's funding the work that's being done in Georgia for that, under, for that, I forget what they're doing, culvert replacement or liner? Is that state money or is that federal money?
That's.
Or both?
It's probably both. You're talking about I eighty-nine?
Yeah.
Probably, it's probably Fed Highway and State.
The reason I think about is you have that area that's, I think, just north of the one oh five overpass, right across from Hardak. Getting to be kind of a mess.
It is.
Right along that, right along the interstate. And if you could pitch it as a preventative, preventative work for that area, there might be some other payers that you could appeal to.
Yep, it's a good idea. So on that, so on that first section, I think we were hoping to get some of that pot of money that comes in. The other four sections as a select board, if you're saying they're priority, then we probably need to triage that and figure out which one needs to be done first. And then as the annual budget process grinds forward, we, every year we ask for support. We have asked.
If our LOT revenue looks even somewhat close to where we were at last year, I gotta believe that there's some local room in there. If we came up with a four-phase plan or a three-phase plan to fix French Hill Road with the cost every year and just put it out there as this is our plan, this many phases, we will have it done by no later than and we need this much funding per year to come from the LOT with the voters support it. I would bet that the voters would support that five to one, saying, let's get that thing fixed with local option tax money. What, what do you, what do you think about that, Erin?
I think, you know, we've talked about a lot of different projects that would be funded by the LOT tonight. So I think, you know, I think that this would have to get worked into the capital improvement plan. And I think that we need to see how, we have to see how the LOT is looking after this. So, you know, I think that if maybe in six months-ish, when maybe we're looking at updating the capital improvement plan for the next fiscal year, I'm saying six months, it might be longer than that at this point. I'm not sure. But when we're looking at it again, like maybe then the select board will give direction about, okay, let's move up French Hill to put that in the capital plan to consider the LOT. Because I think until we know more about LOT any, you know, after this, we can't really make a decision right now. With that money.
You think we should still keep pressing forward with having staff organize what those phases are going to look like and how much this should cost? To have that readily available?
I think that makes sense, just to know what the cost would be so that we could plan for them. Yeah.
All right, Jonathan, you rank this as your number three. Is there anything that we're missing that you want to add?
Yeah, I just, I just don't want to let this fall to the wayside. I think we've got to do whatever we've got to do to keep this going. So this, these problems get resolved.
Fair enough. Anybody have anything else they want to add to French Hill Road? So that one's going to get delegated to staff and we're going to try to come up with what those phases are and develop concrete information on them and some price tags and then go from there and maybe six months we'll be know more about our revenue projections. We've got Department of Public Works, the Brigham Road site that provide an update, the select boards working with SASSA. And it looks like we might be able to form some kind of a partnership, allowing SASSA to utilize the old salt shed if the new one is ready on Brigham Road for us to use this year. They have a set of boards that they would be able to use and they're willing to pay. Even if they only get it for one to two years to be able to use it, they're willing to make some lighting and electrical upgrades to our building at their cost. But that doesn't really go, that's just where we're at in a one to two-year basis and not even that is concrete yet. So we've got to decide what we're going to do with that property, what the best next use is. I'd really take any commentary from anybody here. And I see you just unmuted.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I mean, I think that part of this is going to depend on town hall planning. I feel like this is kind of a cascade decision for what happens to this site. But I do think that if we're thinking about potentially having, you know, if, if relocating the town hall is in the works and that is one of the sites that's being considered, you know, maybe thinking about if, if, once it gets there, is there a way that we can also have recreation there because of having, I mean, how unique is it to have a town hall so close to the water? So, but I, I see this as a cascade thing. I don't know. But there could be some planning that we could do now, depending on what people think about recreation in that space.
Anybody else have any comments? Jess?
Yeah, I would really like to get the community involved in that project before we make any decisions. Maybe have some forums and get ideas and input. Because I, I know what I would like to see there, but I think it's one of those things that we could really get a lot of community support and buy-in and involvement in and make it exciting and a new resource for the town. Especially if it goes in the direction of recreation.
So community involvement and the COVID pandemic, it's been really hard to be able to get people. I think we had, we had one member of the public on, on the line and it was a parent of one of the planning commission members. So it's been really hard to get the public to call in.
Well, I don't think we can really do anything on this for, you know, six months at least anyway, because we need to get the town, like Erin said, it's a cascading decision. So this isn't an immediate thing we need to deal with.
We should have them involved in the town hall decision too. Same effect. That's where I was going to head with that. I agree with what you're saying about this site, but it's also exactly what you said for the town hall.
I bet there's going to be some really interesting ways that other municipalities around the country are getting folks involved during this time. Because we're not the only ones facing this issue. So, you know, I think if anyone does, if you see a headline about how people are getting involved, like send it to Kerry and Ned and think that they probably want to know and we could maybe find a way of, you know, finding a way to do this because we're all participating right now. I think there's other way, we figured out how to make this work. I think we can, we can figure it out.
That said, does anybody have anything they want to add to that EPW site in Georgia? Hearing nobody. Is there anything that we left? What's that?
Real quick, so SASSA, were they looking at that for the two thousand twenty to twenty-one season? Or was, is that the start, like this thing roughly?
In a perfect world, they would love it then. I just don't know that we're going to be out of there in that.
Construction going on, right?
Yeah.
Right, okay. So I guess once.
Thought goes to plan, we will be, but.
Right.
Can't plan on anything now.
If, if we get our new salt shed over on Brigham Road and that's sitting there empty, I think we would be foolish not to let them have that for the winter, at least for one winter or whatever.
Right. Definitely.
And also, go ahead Erin. I just, I just wasn't sure Jonathan, was that, because of, because my comments around recreation at the site were more for like long-term recreation at the site and not SASSA. I feel like SASSA was like a totally different, you know, if they can use the site in the short term while we figure out what we need to do, then you know, if we can figure out some of the other pieces we talked at the select board meeting, then I would be for that if we can figure the pieces out.
Well, and I believe it is short-term for them. If I, if I understood, I forget his name now that was talking to us. You only wanted it for like two to three years, if I remember right.
I think he said that in the context that we would only offer it for two to three, two years. At the conversation was one to two. And he said that it would probably be worth it to them even for one year as a lighting and electrical upgrade. So is there any priority that should be on the list that we didn't talk about? Anybody have anything that we left off, fell through the cracks? So this was a pretty good marathon. Al, sorry.
Yes, I have one question, and it's to Kerry and to Ned. Do you have enough staff to handle all the things that we've talked about?
No. I mean, in my head, I was thinking, how many more priorities would you like? Because with the COVID, I have had very little time to do any staff, regular staff things. But I think it will, I think we have time to do many of these things. I, I've got to process this when I'm alone to figure it out because we don't have a lot of extra time right now.
Very nice, good point, Al. So, did anybody have any questions or clarifying comments on anything before we get out of here?
I want to add one thing. Before we lose Grant to the school board, I want to make sure he gets a round of applause, maybe as even a standing ovation for his help. He has made my job immeasurably easier in, over the years. Thank you, thank you, thank you. I really have appreciated and, and loved every minute with you on the planning commission, especially as chairman.
Thank you, Ned. I'm off the planning, but I won't be gone. I may come in for public comment from time to time. You guys are certainly welcome to reach out if you need an opinion or anything like that. And I don't see this being, you know, bye, I'm gone. I see it being, hey, I'm going off and doing this for now. And, you know, maybe there's an opportunity down the road. So, thank you.
We appreciate that, Grant, and we hope you come back in some capacity in the future and wish you luck with Maple Run. Good luck. Honest to God, you're fighting for a future up there. Okay, so that said, nobody has anything to add to any of the topics? I want to welcome Hannah to the planning commission. Hannah, I don't want to put you on the spot, but if you want to introduce yourself to everyone, now would be a great time before we head off for the night.
Sure. Hi, I'm Hannah. I moved to St. Albans in May of twenty eighteen. I'm up like up thirty-six over the hills. So I'm kind of the opposite direction of the Bay Area and all that, but it's nice to be working with you all. So keep it short.
Thank you, Hannah. Welcome. Glad to have you. Okay, so nobody else, anything else to add? We'll take a motion to adjourn from the slot board member.
I'll make that motion to adjourn.
Second?
I'll second it.
Okay, just a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, so we've got a motion to adjourn in the past, seven fifty-one. So thank you.